Okay.
That's just, that doesn't make sense.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started with the roll call at least. I know some council members still need to log in, so we won't be doing any voting immediately. So, but Suzanne, if you'd like to start roll call, we'll do that.
Okay, I see council member is also on with us. So we have Mayor LaBar.
Present.
Mayor Protim Case.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Nikai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Ott.
Here.
Councilmember Zulawaga.
Present.
Thank you.
Just quickly for Councilmember Ott, he needs to log in. One, you need to log in, if you can, to Civic Clerk. Two, just speak up because I can't see you and I will forget. So if you have something to say, just shout out and I'll get to you. I'm sorry.
Suzanne, it shows me in the meeting.
Yes, sir. I see you. Thank you. I just, I do need you to log in, sir, for voting purposes. I don't have you logged in to vote. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
All right. This evening, we're starting with ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And we have the 2022 Creek Week Presentation and Proclamation. Our presenter is Amy Brodigan.
Hi.
Hey.
My name is Amy Brodigan. I am the Watershed Outreach Coordinator for the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District. And I'm running Creek Week this year. And thank you, Mayor, and council members for allowing us this time to present. Creek Week is a nine-day annual watershed-wide cleanup event. We bring together thousands of volunteers from all across the watershed, from Palmer and Monument down to the Confluence and Pueblo, and from Woodland Park and Green Mountain Falls, all across Colorado Springs Fountain and Security. And we bring together thousands of volunteers. We remove hundreds of tons of debris and litter from the waterways and from the land. And I do have save the date cards on the back table, if you'd like them, and council members, you may have received them already. Our website is on there. You can register a crew. You can pick anywhere in the watershed. We'll provide you with training and supplies. If you want, you can register a public cleanup. So other member, other people in the public will see that cleanup on our website and let you know, and they'll register to join you. Or you can do a private cleanup where it's just you and your organization, your friends, your family, and so forth. Either way, we'll provide the training and the supplies. We're very grateful for your continued support and for recognizing Creek Week with the proclamation this year. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Counsel, any question?
Just one quick one. How long has this been going on?
This is the ninth annual.
Did you, did you say that and I just missed it?
It's on. I, I may not have said it.
Okay.
But yeah, this is the.
It's on the flyer. Thanks.
We're really excited about next year being our 10th annual. So we're, we're looking to really ramp it up for next year especially.
Great. Thank you.
And also, how many miles is the area you cover?
The entire watershed is 927 square miles. And so that's the area we cover. And we do occasionally have some cleanups that are a little bit outside of the watershed. So, for example, West Pueblo will sometimes do a cleanup, even though that's not technically within the confines of the watershed, because it sort of narrows at the bottom as the Fountain Creek runs into the Arkansas. It get, the watershed itself gets narrow. But if, if there are cleanups outside of the watershed, we're still happy to support and provide the training and the supplies.
Awesome. Thanks very much. Thanks for what you do.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation recognizing Creek Week for 2022, and then I'm gonna pass it to council for their signatures. Whereas the city of Woodland Park is fortunate to have an extensive and diverse natural resources such as forests, grasslands, riparian areas, lakes, creeks, and a wide variety of open spaces. And whereas the Fountain Creek watershed is a unique and important resource and asset to the residents and visitors of Fountain and Pike's Peak region. And whereas the Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District in partnering, is partnering with the city of Colorado Springs, El Paso County, Pueblo County, the cities of Manitou Springs Fountain, and towns of Monument and Green Mountain Falls, and numerous community organizations to coordinate the ninth annual Creek Week cleanup, which will encourage the protection, restoration, and maintenance of the Fountain Creek watershed. And whereas this nine-day litter cleanup effort runs September 24th through October 2nd, 2022, throughout the watershed and is now the largest cleanup effort in our state. And whereas Creek Week programs and activities are designed to raise awareness about the littering issues within our watershed, to encourage organizations and individuals to collect litter and debris to make Fountain Creek and the watershed cleaner, safer. And whereas businesses, churches, schools, nonprofits, neighborhood associations, youth groups, service clubs, and individuals are encouraged to form a creek crew to clean up at Creek Week project site. And whereas Creek Week litter removal activities will reduce pollution in our creeks and clogs in our waterways that can lead to flooding, provide for safer drinking water supply, and enhance wildlife habitat and property values. Now, therefore, council members of City of Woodland Park, Colorado hereby proclaim September 24th through October 2nd, 2022 as Creek Week in the city of Woodland Park. It encourages our citizens to help protect, restore, and maintain our waterways by participating in Creek Week activities done this first day of September 2022 in the city of Woodland Park, Colorado. All right. Whereas, we're going to move on to B. And unfortunately for us, but fortunately for Rob, it's a farewell and thank you to Rob Phelps, our assistant to the city manager. And our presenters are Michael Lawson and Suzanne LeClaire.
And Grace. Grace too.
All right, why don't you come on up here, Rob? Did you think you were gonna get away with sitting out there? Come on, comfortable. So, as the mayor said, we, we have a bittersweet occasion tonight in that one of our finest employees, without a doubt, will be departing the city of Woodland Park after tomorrow to go, go on to new adventures. He'll be staying in the area, thank God, because we'll have a lot of questions for him, I'm sure. But we, we have been so blessed by, by Rob. I've, I've been here almost two years now. Rob was one of the first people I met. And right away, I think we had a rapport, and we, we found our common passion for doing this work. And you would be hard pressed to find anybody in any organization out there who's got the heart of service that this man does. He throws his whole self into it. It doesn't matter what it is. Like, Rob, we need you to go clean Fountain Creek all by yourself. Okay, he would do it. But he would find the most efficient way to do it first. He would do that research, because he, he has that, that wonderful heart, but also that expertise that has just made him a perfect fit for the assistant to the city manager role, which is basically kind of a right hand of mine. He does policy work, but he also runs a cemetery. He does procurement for us. He's doing, he's working on fiber. What, I, there, I mean, I'd be here all night if I was talking about all the stuff you have done. Your Swiss Army knife is, is a great analogy. And he does it all well. And so I, it certainly bittersweet. We're happy for Rob and his family. We will miss him dearly. Rob is not only a great employee, but I also count him as a friend and really as a brother in many regards. And so I, I want to thank you for your, your great work, your dedication to our community, our organization. We, we do have for you one of the coveted challenge coins here. I know these are hot commodity among military folks. I don't know if that's true. But just, just a small token of, of our appreciation for you, certainly. We, we have more stuff for you later, but we wanted to give that to you. So, thank you. I will hand it off to Suzanne so she can start crying right now.
That's Suzanne's job.
That's my job. Someone specifically put this box of tissues, did you? This is the kind of guy Rob is. He would think, oh, she's probably gonna cry tonight. I'll go and I'll get tissues and I'll leave them here for her, but he didn't do that. It's funny that Michael would mention Swiss Army knife, because I have something written here that I wanted to talk about, and it starts with Swiss Army knife. Do you want to sit down? Yes. Because I can't be close. Yeah, sit down. So I looked up the definition and meaning of a Swiss Army knife. As Rob has often been described as the Swiss Army knife of the city of Woodland Park. These are some of the definitions of a Swiss Army knife. Prepare, mending, firmness of purpose, bring around, rectify, resolve, relieve, answer, restore, remediate, therapeutic, situate, heal, amend, solving, outlet, secure, and ready. When I look at all these definitions, it certainly describes Rob. I have yet to see a situation that Rob could not rectify, remedy, or restore, and he always did each with such kindness and compassion. Rob, the things I'm going to miss about you. First, wondering where you are and what you're doing. Two, figuring out what am I going to have for lunch every day. Three, your stories. Your stories about your SF career, which I find fascinating and enjoy. Your stories about your family and your kids. Four, your smile and your face. And five, most of all, your companionship and friendship. I have the utmost respect for Rob. You exhibit all the best qualities every human should have. Here I go.
Bless.
Sorry, you are man of your word. You exhibit integrity daily in all you do. You are a loving and devoted father, husband, and a faithful man of God and His word. We have laughed and cried together, and I will cherish those times. It has been an absolute pleasure working with you these past years. Thank you for being someone who brightened my day. Working with you has been one of the perks of being here. And I'm going to miss seeing you every day. You have been so dependable, supportive, encouraging, and honest during your time here. I underestimated the value of our working relationship. We have seen each other almost every day. We have spoken to each other almost every day. We have shared our lives with each other almost every day. And somewhere along the line, we became friends. So I say goodbye for now to you, because this is not goodbye forever. I hope you find everything you are looking for going forward. I cannot think of anyone more deserving of the best life has to offer. Your new place is incredibly lucky to have you. Keep doing great things. Some people come into our lives and quickly go. Others stay a while, make footprints on our hearts, and we are never, ever the same. This is you, Rob. Thank you for everything, my friend, and Godspeed to you.
Hey, Grace.
There's your tissues.
Okay, I'm gonna read mine to you all, because I can't look at these two, or else I will just cry the whole time. Um, I want to start by saying, despite all the nice things I'm about to say about you, I'm still really, really mad at you, so don't get it twisted. Um. When Rob started with the city in early 2020, I don't think any of us knew that he would soon become one of the most valuable members of our team and have a significant impact on our culture here at the city. I have to admit that I was a little skeptical of Rob when he started with the city. I was like, who is this fuzzy-haired dude? And what, what is he doing here? What exactly is his job? But Rob very quickly became everyone's go-to person. And when I say everyone, I mean everyone. You guys touched on that, but every single person in the city has worked with Rob in some capacity. And when Rob started right before COVID, and when COVID happened, he jumped right in to help us navigate all of that. We really couldn't have gotten through that without his guidance and willingness to roll with the punches. And he's the reason that you can watch our council meetings on Zoom now. So, if Rob had a catchphrase, it would be, of course, whatever you need. He's always there. He's the guy you turn to when you need help. And he always does it without question or hesitation. For that same reason, Rob is also an incredible friend to everyone he meets. He will do everything in his power to cheer you up if you're having a bad day. He is considerate of every single person on our team before himself, and he never fails to liven up the lunch table. The energy and humor he brings to our little family here at this city will be impossible to replace. Rob is also a true public servant. He cares deeply about building community wherever he goes and giving back wherever he can. I'm not sure how many of you know this, but when Rob isn't working long nights and long hours for the city, he's still serving others. Not only is he working toward his masters in public administration, but he also volunteers so many weekends taking his Boy Scout troop into the mountains and teaching them life and survival skills. And if that's not enough, Rob leads our ICMA's Veterans Local Government Fellowship Program, mentoring veterans and helping them to make careers in other local governments. Though we've all had a lot of fun giving him a hard time over his last few weeks with the city, I can confidently say on behalf of everyone at the city that he will be truly missed. The commitment and countless hours that Rob has given this to, to this community cannot be measured. So thank you, Rob. Sorry for crying.
It's three pages. Double spaced.
So, I'll try to bring it a little wider, but I've never written anything down before. I just thought.
Anything ever.
You're going for your master's.
But I'm afraid this time, if I look at shoes, I'm gonna lose it. So I want some words to go off of. Let me make it bigger, though, because I'm getting old.
So are we.
All right, so, one, like, I don't want to go into too many specifics, because I gotta kind of do this tomorrow. I want to do the people I work with, and, and I'll kind of talk to them there. But just kind of some broad strokes. First, I'd like to thank Michael for all, all the opportunities he's given me here. Like, I've had a very long leash to find out what I'm interested in and fight, figure out where I can do things better, make things better, and he's just lets me run with it. So I appreciate that from Michael, and I'm thankful to the council for allowing, giving, putting him in a place where he can allow me to do that. So there, there's a couple other things I'd like to say to council and the citizens here that I've learned since I've been here and what the organization has done for me. So first off, just so you know me a little bit better, because not all of you do, but some fun facts. First, I'm not an IT guy. I learned how to do this by watching Google, and, and that's how I did it, and I just kind of fell into that. Before I was here, I was in the Army. I spent 26 years. And I came here through the Veterans Local Government Management Fellowship that, like Grace just mentioned, I now help other veterans get in. And I even brought in a council member from that program. So David Ott was actually one of my interns. So that was interesting. So, I came to work for Woodland Park after a 26-year career in the US Army, and I retired out of Fort Carson. I spent the earlier parts of my military career being assessed and measured for placement in high-performance teams. I spent the rest of my career assessing and measuring others for developing those same teams around the world. For decades, I worked with our nation's finest human beings in our country and in others. I say this because I want you to understand, I know exactly what talent and high performance is. So leaving the Army was a much bigger endeavor than I had expected. I thought, you just get out of the Army and start a new job. It's not really how it worked. I lost my identity. For 26 years, I was something that all of a sudden I wasn't anymore. Trusty. All of a sudden, I was something that I wasn't anymore. My biggest fear leaving the Army is that I would never again work with the caliber of people I'd been surrounded with for decades. People that held the highest esteem for values like honesty, integrity. People that were experts in the field, in their field. People that measured one another on work ethic. People with so much compassion for one another that they would risk their lives for each other just for the excitement. I was terrified I'd never find that again. This is what I found at the city of Woodland Park. Experts. Have you guys ever talked to Kip Wiley about water? Like, such a boring conversation. It's like, Kip, I want to know how much snow we got in Rocky Mountain National Park, so I can go skiing. And it's an hour-long conversation about how that's gonna affect the fire for next summer and, and how much water rights we're gonna need. Aaron Basilotti, he's our finance director. So I spent three months with Aaron before he even got here on Zoom, him teaching me about budget. He did such a good job remotely that I, in my economics class and masters, I got an A and never even opened a book. Work ethic. So I come from, in my unit in the Army, I'm a little bit, I came out of it with some bias. I work with all men, usually the ages of 30 to 40, and that's what I looked for, for excellence, and I thought that's there. I get here, I meet a woman half my age, twice as smart, and works half as hard, or twice as hard. Freudian slip. But, and, and that's the work ethic that I found here. Compassion. You guys know Suzanne? Like, I talk about what we do for each other as soldiers. There is nothing that Suzanne wouldn't do for anyone that she knows. And, and I think that I have a special, I'm not gonna look at you anymore, a special relationship with Suzanne, but it's not just me that she treats that way. She treats everyone that way, and that is compassion, and thank you. Honesty and integrity, that's everywhere in the city. Everyone that I work with is the, the highest caliber of an honest and, and holds integrity to the highest standards. Those are just some examples. Those are the people that are here and that I work with every day. But you see it all throughout, from people in public works, people in finance, people when you walk through the door, every single person in the city. And I'm eternally grateful for the caliber of people that I have had the opportunity to work with and the friends that I've made. And I often wonder myself, it may just be that everyone in the world holds all these values to such a high standard. And maybe they're not that uncommon. After all, what are the chances that I left one unit that sees values that way just to land in another one? That's almost exactly the same. However, I think if that were the case, and everybody put those values to the standard that the employees of this city does, if everybody put their desire to serve people and do for others that the people of this city does, then this whole world would be a much better place. So I encourage all of you to get to know these people a little bit better. And if you've ever endowed their integrity, their courage, their compassion, any of those things, just get to know them like I do. And you know, Grace runs the Citizen Academy with, like, everything else. She pours her heart and soul into it. Sign up for it, and you'll get to meet those people. And I hope that you come to see them the same way that I do, if you don't already. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That could not have been said better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time here. And they aren't joking when they said you'll do anything, because I even know I'd always have a Dr. Pepper. So even when it was just the small mundane things, you, you stepped up to it. And I remember when, when I first met you, I was like, do you know you look like this actor guy? You're like, who, what? And he's the guy that plays the Incredible Hulk, and you are the Incredible Hulk for this city. The, the work you do here and, and just how well-liked you are and, and the joy and the positivity and the, the commitment you brought is known by even us, and we really appreciate it. So, and we're gonna be sad to see you go, but I'm glad that you got the opportunity. So thanks, Rob.
You will be missed, definitely.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
I was asked, what, what does this guy do? Why is he here?
The everything.
It's the background. I'm gonna go with Grace, and I'm still mad at you, but the best of luck. Yeah. With everything you do going forward. I know you'll succeed, because that's who you are. No.
Sure. We have a light agenda.
So I do really buy lunch almost every day. And last week, they tried to do it themselves, and it was a complete. If you guys could, time to time, just make sure they're still eating.
He says, he says, he says to me today, you know, we have our, our final moments, and he says, Sue, there's one thing I'm really, really worried about. And I said, what's that, Rob? He says, ordering lunch. He says, you guys can't do it. He can't handle it.
Maybe, maybe it can be a volunteer position for Peter.
Not only does he order it, he goes and gets it.
Yeah.
Saves our orders, knows what our favorite things are, even if we can't tell them what we want.
It's priceless.
Yeah. And irreplaceable. All right. Well, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on.
It's harder than it looks.
All right, four, we have nothing. Five, nothing. Six is public comment on items not on the agenda. And I'm sorry, before I go any further, I didn't know if Councilmember Ott had anything he wanted to add, because he's not here, and I don't make eye contact with him, so.
He doesn't have his hand up.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. So on to six, with public comment on items not on the agenda. I do not.
When I checked the sheet, no one was signed up.
Okay. And Zoom?
There's nobody.
All right. So, oh, sure. Come on up to the podium. Want to talk about Rob? And just state your name for the record, that's all.
Okay, Eugene Hoden. I just wanted to say, I am glad you are all here tonight, because nobody was here last Thursday night when I drove up to try to come to the meeting. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
First and third, first and third.
And now for our favorite topic that we're revisiting. It's with HR Green Telecommunications Plan, and they have brought back some further information for us. And we have Ken Price, and you guys are both gonna present this evening or answer questions. So, not just Ken, but.
Yes, we should have our third colleague on the phone.
Okay.
On Zoom. I don't know if you need to promote him in order to let him speak. John, are you out there?
John Merritt, I know, talking to Sarah. John is on, I believe, and apologies. He sends his regards and regrets. He was in Maui for the last seven or so days, got back late, and you get the idea. It was a red-eye flight, so he's upside down, and he's still at home. But he's listening and can jump in if need be. So John Merritt, hopefully. Darn the luck.
Okay.
Okay, good.
So Sarah's gonna try to get him promoted so he can participate. Okay, excellent. So, gentlemen, you're welcome to start when you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
He's there now.
Great. Thank you so much. So I am Ken Price, and, and on my right is Dave Zelenok, and on Zoom is John Merritt. We were with you back earlier this month, actually, last month. And, and gave you, I think, shared a great deal of information about the project that we're working on for you all. Our first question to you all is, do we need to go back through any of that information, or do we just want to dive in and have a conversation?
Dive, dive in.
Okay. So, where we, we left off the conversation, we had just shared with you all different business models around broadband. We could actually bring that up. Can maybe you can click a few slides forward. Keep going. Several, actually. Okay, stop. Go back. One more. Okay, so these were the the different types of business models, as you may recall, that we talked about. So on on one end, you have a publicly owned and operated. That's where the city of Woodland Park potentially would become an ISP. And you gave us direction last time that that was not something that you were interested in. On the other end of the scale, you have where you are today as a city, where the private sector is doing anything and everything. And you said again that that wasn't where you wanted to stay. So we really have, it's really three models that we can talk about tonight. And Dave, you want to chime in and maybe share some about those those models?
Yeah, so 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 there really are three, it looks like four, but there's only three models. I can go into partnership with the private sector and as you may recall, Woodland Park did pass, the voters here did approve an item on the ballot a couple of years ago. It's called Senate Bill 152. Back in 2005, the state legislature was kind enough to prohibit any city governments from doing public-private partnerships were related to fiber and broadband. And a few years ago, your citizens through the ballot box.
Two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen, gave you the green light. So you now can legally in Colorado, given the state legislator and the rules there, you can go into a public-private partnership for broadband. And I think that passed here more than twelve, by 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 a wide majority, I want to say more than two to one.
Yeah.
Was a resounding green light that you folks got from your voters. And then moving to the middle there, fiber master planning, that's a bit what we're what we're looking at tonight, actually, which is there are, of course, ARPA funds available, there are IJF funds, and I think I may have mentioned last time that I had a conversation with the the governor has created a new broadband office called the Colorado Broadband Office. And curiously, the former Buena Vista town manager, town administrator. And she went on to serve and and we worked with her up there and helped Buena Vista create their fiber master plan. She went from there to the town of Eagle. We helped her there, create her fiber master plan. And now she's in charge. She told me she has a billion dollars roughly of IJF funds. And she kind of rattled off, we got five hundred million here, seven hundred million here. And she came up to almost roughly five billion dollars of federal funds she has in Denver or or on the way to Denver for fiber broadband projects around the state. I says, Randy, gosh, you got five billion dollars. There's roughly five million people in Colorado, divide one by the other, and there's almost, we're just very roughly back of the napkin, thousand bucks per Colorado and coming from the federal government to help you all with fiber broadband projects. It's a big deal. And the federal government recognizes it, the state recognizes it. And obviously, we're tonight because you folks recognize it. And I mention that because really the that that fiber master planning is is where most cities seem to be landing these days there or doing partnerships with the private sector. And then on the far right-hand side is more the El Paso County approach, which is which is largely doing public policy, but helping out when they can. For example, in El Paso County, they have passed a number of rules and they're looking visionary and they are doing some some work when there's opportunities present themselves. But but El Paso County is not doing, for example, a fiber ring that Rob has envisioned here for you folks. So it's kind of a step short of that. So you can, you can take it all the way to doing a partnership with the private sector. You can help the private sector by building components of that, or you can just do it by policy. And that's those are kind of the three, really, the three broad options when you say can that they got before them tonight or kind of a combination of it. There is no right or wrong way of doing this, by the way. Canyon City recently had a, had an RFP they put on the street, they but they brought a million of our a million dollars of ARPA money, for example, before a competitive process and they got a number of proposers, one of whom I think is actually here this evening, Sebastian from Stratus IQ. And that's a process still ongoing. And so our advice to Canyon City, for example, is yeah, you've got a million ARPA dollars, that's great. You want to build a fiber ring just like yours. You may want to use the million dollars of ARPA federal money. And the weird thing about ARPA, as you may know, is you can match, first time I've ever seen this in my career, you can match federal funds with federal funds. If they're ARPA dollars, you can batch them if that means anything. And so my point to Canyon City earlier today was, gosh, yeah, you got a million city ARPA dollars, maybe you can leverage that through Brandy and come up with five million dollars. And in that case, some of the advantages Canyon City has and you folks, we see also, may be able to do some smart city things because you own more of the fiber optic network that the what we're seeing, in fact, I just wrote an article for Central States Water Magazine, encouraging cities to do what you're doing, build a fiber ring and push fiber as far out as you can into the neighborhoods. And then use that to to eventually replace the water meter reading system rather than reading your water meters by RF, by radio signal, you can you can measure your water consumption and send your bills out because you have a fiber optic cable that goes there. So you don't need to have two systems, you have one. And there's so many other smart city technologies and so many capabilities that you can look. We we like to say that cities like that can future-proof themselves, that you don't need to be beholding necessarily to one architecture or one provider. You want to be open-ended, you want to have have a lot of open access, as they call it, and you want to have flexibility capabilities and ideally minimum cost to the city. And right now, as I said, what we're what we're looking at for for cities like that is to maximize the federal funds flowing to communities like yours and to to really be creative. One time, this is once in a generation, we say, we can really truly be creative and they're looking forward and future-proof the community.
And I also want to tie it into a conversation that I understand you had earlier in your work session about economic development. That's another key role, fiber will play another key role there, attracting, retaining current businesses. So again, it plays a part in your economic development future as well.
In this slide, it just shows there's a there's a variety of other nuances and you can kind of pick and choose from there. But I think really what we're hoping for this evening is perhaps just some more comments from you, some more input from you. I would like to think this is more of a listening session or Q and A session to help you understand the options available and then make an informed decision and then share with us just some broad comments we can distill into some consensus. And since say, do you want to go pursue funding and build a fiber optic network ring? Or ring by itself? Do you want to go into the neighborhoods? Do you want to try to maximize federal funding? And you want to put the brakes on that? Do a public-private partnership? Do you want to try all the above? Again, there's no right or wrong answer, but I think that that what we're seeing most communities your size doing. And and my recollection is you folks technically, and I mean, that's the kindest way, the way the broadband office sees Woodland Park is you are just barely on the fringe of the rural, the rural boundary. As far as funding goes, that's a good thing for you because, for example, as you get into Colorado Springs and El Paso County, that's a that's an urban area and they are eligible for far, far less funding from the state that you folks are. The assumption is they've got plenty of providers down here. The assumption is you folks are technically rural from their eyes and and need more help than they do. And so that thousand dollars per person is probably weighted more, maybe it's two to one in rural areas like you have here. So there's a lot of money available. And there's, as Ken said, the economic development reasons are there. Teleworking, obviously, remote education, helping the kids through that. There's there's a wide, wide array of good reasons to do it, but also understand that there are reasons why you may not want to do it. There's risks involved and there are some future costs involved. And those are things we'd like you to weigh carefully and give us some advice on.
So if I can just relay to the slide that's up there, we see a lot of municipalities your size going with number two and number three typically. Number, number three more often than than number two. And that's really where you as Woodland Park build the infrastructure. So you put the fiber and and the conduits and, you know, depending on which network design you you decide to go with in the ground and you own that. So you own the assets. Okay. And then you go, you develop a public-private partnership with someone to provide services over that. So you don't go into the ISP business, you just own the pipe and someone else puts the water through it. Okay?
And which one would that be?
That's number three.
Number three.
So how is that different from number two? Because they look some, they look similar to me.
Number two, and I'll get, there's an operation and maintenance piece that's in number two, that's not in number three.
Okay.
So number three, you would go again out to the private sector for someone to operate it and maintain it. So you wouldn't even have to be responsible for that.
Okay.
All you would own is the asset.
As well as the last one.
As well as one, well, yeah.
Gets a lot more fiber.
Okay.
You keep talking about fiber, but who are you recommending or where on your chart does the the chassis that the fiber plugs into?
And that, again, is dependent upon the this, the type of model that you go with. So if you go with number three, you're not lighting that fiber. So you're not putting anything on any ends of that fiber. Now, number, number two, you would, you would have to buy the equipment to go on either end to light that fiber.
And for a city this size, what's your estimate, ten to twenty million dollars worth of chassis?
No, I don't think it's that.
Twelve hundred dollars per passing is a good rule of thumb we use. Maybe lower, maybe a little bit higher. It's probably a little lower here because you have a lot of aerial infrastructure, the telephone poles really reduce the, it reduces the cost significantly, probably cuts it in half. So I'd be surprised if you spent twelve hundred bucks for passing. One of the slides I think we've had or we've shown before is that the increase in value to real estate is about ten times that, that the studies have shown. Depends on the single-family dwelling, a condo, it depends on what you're looking at, but three percent to eight percent at the high end for a condo. Fiber optic condo rent for eight percent more, fiber optic connected house will sell for three percent roughly more. And so just run the math there, you put a thousand dollars into infrastructure and people see that suddenly your your homes are selling faster because millennials are more likely to buy them because they can get connected here. They're working remotely and they can, those houses tend to sell faster at a higher price, about three percent.
Well, I'm I'm trying to correlate the information that was passed out to us in the packets where there was a white paper. And the data in the white paper with these models talks about the costs and they use a hundred thousand citizens, city in in laying out the cost. So if you just try to do a linear straight, it's down to ten thousand. If you go from what they cite in capital costs, just to do what you're saying, that's the chassis level, not not running it or anything. It's the capital for completing the network. It's a hundred and fifty million dollars is what's in that white paper. So if you just do a straight line down from a hundred thousand down to your ten thousand, you should be looking at about ten to fifteen million.
And so that would be true if you were undergrounding it here in Woodland Park, you have the aerial advantage of aerial infrastructure and that cuts your cost probably another half below that. So it's it's several million dollars.
Six to seven million.
The the estimate that we included in our, we actually have.
That slide.
Can you go back a few slides? Right there. So that middle column is our is our cost estimate for undergrounding everything. So it's about one point eight.
But I was told that did not include the chassis.
One point eight million. That's correct.
It's just fiber.
The that's just putting in the conduit and the fiber.
Right, dark fiber. But when you light it up, that's where you see the significant cost in in the chassis. And that's what they included, which drives it to that fifteen million dollars in that white paper.
And that all depends upon the business model that you choose. So if you go with number three or number two.
Two.
Was it two or three? Anyway, if you go with the hybrid model, and I can't remember which one it is now. That's three. You're not buying any equipment to light it up.
Right.
That's somebody else.
So the cost going from three to two, if I'm reading your numbers, goes from about one point eight for for model number three to about fifteen million for model number two.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, that would be for the last mile included in that, I presume. In other words, lighting up people's homes and businesses.
Yeah, this this is only the ring.
This is only the ring.
The backbone around town.
So in the white paper, were they talking about the last mile in the white paper?
I think so. Those numbers tell me that they were talking about last mile.
So what would your guess be capital?
For the ring?
For if we went to model number two, which is last mile.
So everybody gets fiber again, but back to about twelve hundred dollars per passing nationally. And probably a little bit less because you've got aerial here and even a little bit less than that because you've got the trunk line, think of it that way, into Colorado Springs. You own that already. So you don't have any costs there to device. Your cost of connections are minimal. Your aerial costs are minimal. It's probably nine hundred-ish, I'm going to take a guess, thousand dollars at most per passing. And so take the number of houses that would want the service times a thousand bucks roughly.
And does that include the operations of the chassis? Because they don't just plug in and you walk away from them forever.
That note, no. So so that'd be the 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 capex, the capital expenditure, which would be the equipment, be putting the fiber on utility poles and some underground. Buying equipment and and we probably want to do a deep dive there because there's, there's a number of different, they call them architectures. And this is where Rob and the IT geeks like sitting among us here, I love to get into this because there's this one highly regarded, I'll call it a five-star architecture, it's being deployed in parts of Colorado Springs. I won't get too geeky here, but it's called software-defined networking. And basically, that allows grandma to have what's called a virtual private network, which is which, so you can run a SCIF, a DoD SCIF from grandma's house because it's that secure. It's more expensive and not everybody wants to do that. Other cities say, no, we just want to get grandma her HBO and so we can share fibers and we'll take it only to the node in the cul-de-sac and everybody shares off the one. So so a lot of design has to go into it and really have to kind of decide, do you want to have every grandma have a SCIF? If she wants, probably not. Do you want to have the ability to do that? Or do you just want to have shared? Are you looking for low cost? Or do you want to have future proof? Where where your utility department can have, can do water meeting, water meter reading by fiber optic cable and you share the cost across utilities. So there's so much flexibility here. What we're hoping for tonight really is to get a sense of where where you folks would like to be and then we can maybe take that and play with the numbers and then bring you back, I think, really what what is a a more formal recommendation based on where you think you would like to be as a community. Again, there's a risk, there's questions about, as we spoke last time, ubiquity, do you want everybody to have it? What the, what are your goals? And we hope that we outlined those in our last presentation here.
So help me, if you will. The slide after part three service models, which is two slides down. That slide and the next one. Correlate those for me, please. Which one is not included? Because you have six there and five below in broadband models.
Go back one slide for me.
Yeah, you have five models here.
Okay, six there. So you can really look at the 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 two on the.
Purple and blue?
Yes.
Dark blue?
Yeah.
Are the number one? Yes, no, maybe? Number one, I think, is purple.
Yes, but the number three, there's a number four.
Well, the second one on here would be number three on the next chart, correct?
Or is it?
Hydric ownership, or it's just.
Both of those.
Okay. And then.
And then I can go from there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for helping me.
Sure. Which ones eliminated? Sorry, there's so many people. None of them eliminated. We really just merged two of them together.
Will you go back and show me which two?
Yeah.
Dark blue and light blue.
Public.
Next to after the purple one. The next two after the purple one.
The the public-private partnerships.
Both of the public partnerships are one on the next.
So the dark blue next to the purple and then the one next to that are number two.
They actually don't align. Column two and three are merged.
Yeah.
There you go.
This is the just, there's various recipes for how to do a public-private partnership.
Thank you.
And that's kind of the point we want to make. There's, and you probably chop these into twenty pieces if you want, because there are nuances and distinctions.
It's a whole spectrum. So.
Gotcha.
Can you go to the next slide? Thank you.
Now I, now I can follow. I appreciate your help.
No problem. So I guess that's the basis, I guess, for our conversation tonight, at least we hoped that. Go back to the previous slide, please. Thank you. That we can have a conversation about, you know, which of those middle three, because you've already said you don't want to, number one. And you are currently at number five. And you're not happy with the current situation. So it's really two, three or four. You know, we hope.
I would like to see information on number three for the future. Costs, guestimates on what companies would charge us.
Three.
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 Okay, absolutely.
Everybody wants.
Three.
And explain to me, if you will, number two.
Thank you.
Public entity, city and utility and public entity slash service provider. So in other words, the two blue shaded areas that differentiate from number three.
Probably the best example is what Brecken, what the what Breckenridge is doing is is maybe a good, bad example, if I can state it that way, that to the Breckenridge, I think the, and I was telling you, it's a town manager of Breckenridge just recently. Uh, just recently, in fact, it was a CML conference, uh, and, uh, but I think the number he said was twenty million dollars. They are investing heavily in a city government owned, city government maintained. Uh, fiber optic network, but, uh, but they have hired an exclusive provider, a single corporation. Uh, and, uh, uh, I'll leave a lot of the details out of that, but the corporation is pretty much free to use the. Uh, the towns purchased, uh, the towns financed infrastructure. And try to advance it on the corporation's own schedule. And, uh, there's some debate as to how fast they're moving and how, what the penetration numbers are. The city government has put in, like I said, about twenty million bucks, according to the city manager there. Uh, and they did not, uh, use what some would suggest is a. The highest level of best practices when it comes to structuring contract with the provider. The providers there, they're moving forward, but the, uh, the penetration is low. Arguably, the, the, the flavor of public private partnership puts all the risk on Breckenridge. And puts all the revenue in the corporation's hands. I don't see much of a partnership there, frankly. Uh, you, you, there, there may be a way to structure it. There are ways to structure it. Where you share in the risk and the rewards. And that's, that's really the intent of a public by the partnership. You, you bring forward some money, they bring forward some expertise and you partner, uh, to advance your community. Uh, the one technology I mentioned, this is again in a bit into the weeds, one technology that I mentioned. Uh, that's being deployed now by one provider in Colorado Springs. Uh, with, with, I, I think some great success. In fact, I just learned, they just lit their first cabinet. This past week, wasn't it Sebastian down in Colorado Springs? Uh, that, that particular technology will allow, I'll pick on grandma again, uh, grandma can change providers. With a credit card and a click of a mouse. Uh, if you aren't happy with provider A. You can just fire them and at three o'clock in the morning with your credit card. Try a different internet service provider, because, because they will own the network. It's like owning the highways. And you can choose any carrier you want. I think what that does is that increases competition. That drives down prices, arguably increases service levels. It really gives maximum choice and, and lowest cost to your community. I would suggest that that kind of a model where you have great competition and, and incentives in built in there. To use private sector money to blend it if you need to with, with funds that are available. I think that'd be a great model for you folks.
And, and Dave, if you don't mind me asking, uh, you have the example city of Centennial up there and you know a little bit about Centennial, or if they didn't.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, can you share a little bit about how that model looked and implementation and then, uh, how that's worked out for Centennial?
Absolutely. Uh, a full disclosure, Michael and I first met, but Michael was with Aurora. I was in a city government employee. With Centennial, uh, I even served for a year as a Centennial city manager. So Michael, I think I have an understanding for what you're going through tonight, but, uh, but much of the, much of the infrastructure that Centennial built was under my leadership. Uh, we put together a sixty mile, sixty linear mile network of fiber optic cables. Uh, and actually it was just after I left to join HR Green, Centennial decided that they were going to add in, uh, six million dollars of city money. Again, what, what we designed was a sixty mile network of pipes, just think of it that way, just empty pipes. Every traffic signal in town was connected with a fiber optic conduit. It's not, it's not fancy. It's a dollar a foot. It's orange, it's plastic and they had sixty miles of orange plastic two inch pipe. To every traffic signal along every major corridor in Centennial, Dry Creek Road, Arapahoe Road, everything at sixty miles of pipe in it. Uh, and then, and then Centennial City Council had a discussion, uh, thinking that wow, that worked out pretty well. We've got a lot of interest now. I have a lot of providers out there, uh, and they did award a. Uh, it, it, it looks like it's an exclusive contract with a company called Ting, T I N G. Uh, and to, to a large extent, it seems to be because Ting is moving forward as really the, the sole, uh, preeminent provider. Uh, one person has said that, uh, that, uh, that in the process, Centennial arguably has exchanged one. The sole provider for another sole provider. They had, uh, the incumbent provider. That they weren't happy with, and now they've got largely a second, a second choice, to be fair. Uh, and Ting is moving forward, uh, but, uh, but they had seven million dollars of city government money. And they had sixty miles of pipe valued at twenty million more on top of the seven million in fibers. They twenty million dollar value in pipe for sixty miles. And they put seven million on top of the twenty in value that they had, uh, to put fiber in those pipes. And now on that Ting is making all the revenue, uh, Ting takes, uh, uh, Ting is using their infrastructure and shares. I think it's, it's hundreds of dollars a month back is the structure that they, I think that they arranged. It's a couple thousand bucks a year. And it's a twenty year lease. Uh, I don't think that's much of a partnership personally. If anybody asks me, they didn't. And they're moving forward and Ting, I'm sure will, will do very well financially on the city's twenty million dollar pipe system and seven million dollar investment. That's probably not what you want here either. Much like, well, if that answers your question, but that's, yeah, a little experience with Centennial.
That basically goes to the issue was the contract, not the mom, the, not the, not the ring, not the. So that's shame on Centennial in theory, right?
Uh, there are opinions out there.
But from this council's perspective, it's more than likely shame on Centennial.
Well, I would probably have argued for a different contract structure.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Dave? Dave?
David.
Yes, John.
This is John, yeah. Uh, one thing, um, I would like to bring out, it was. Uh, our mandate in this process was to create, uh, a plan for the backbone. That connected all your city facilities. And so all the numbers you see, uh, in this presentation are based on that assumption. That the connection is, is every home, every.
It's just the city facilities. Sarah, put back to that slide, would you please? John's raising an excellent point, just to refresh your memories, what the fiber ring looks like. Uh, there's a, there's a graphic.
Yellow and red lines on it.
Go back, one more. One more, there you go.
That's it. Thanks, John.
That's a hybrid model.
That's what I like. That makes sense.
In this, there's two kinds of hybrids. There's a hybrid model, well, as Ken said, which is part overhead. Part underground, and this will probably work best, we think, for you folks, but you could have it all underground. Uh, you could argue that if forest fires and other natural events, an underground system is more secure. It's underground by definition, uh, but this is one sense of the word fiber or hybrid. Another sense of the word hybrid, which you've also heard tonight, is a hybrid model in that it's partly owned by the public sector and partly owned by the private sector. So you could have a hybrid, hybrid. You can have partly, partly aerial, oh boy, probably underground. Partly owned by the private sector, partly owned by the city government. There's a lot of ways to structure it.
And one way to look at it is, or one alternative is. The city builds this kind of a network and gets as much federal money as they can to build this. As the middle mile, but it connects all your facilities and then you overbuild it. So that there is room for other providers who would pay. Either a lease agreement or provide services. So you would have the ability to run your own stuff on your own fibers if you wished. Or you could make a deal with, with a provider to, to, uh. Operate your system for you. Uh, and the reality is if you put the system in. And you get other providers wanting to be part of it, they can pay you lease payments. For, uh, all the infrastructure they don't have to put in.
Right.
Yeah, that's the best part about the brandy money, I'll call it, the five billion that's up, that's coming to Denver. Is that they will give you money to build the network and you can keep all the profits. And, but you take some risks, to be fair.
John, can I ask a question? The use of the words to overbuild the network. Are you talking, forgive me, I'm a data center guy, not a network guy. So I know costing data centers and I'm trying to get my head around the cost. At the other end of the data center, which is out here. When you say overbuild, are you talking about putting in more strands, dark strands in there? Or are you talking about, we, we talk in terms of chassis and think of the Cisco. Model, three, three tier models where you have very expensive chassis. That's what we overbuild. Are you talking about overbuilding by putting in more strands of fiber? Or more powerful chassis? Cause at every point, there's an intersection, those, those fibers have to plug into some, what I call a chassis. I don't know what you call those devices in a network.
Lately, we've been using the word cabinet.
Cabinet, very good. Thank you. I'll try to use your terms. Uh, are you putting in hi- higher capacity cabinets? When you say overstructure it, overbuild it?
What, what I'm referring to is in the fiber and the conduit. We're oversizing it, for example, you just put in conduit on, um. Baldwin and you're working on one in Kelly. They're putting in two, two inches in each one of those. Well, the city doesn't need two, two inches, but the majority of the cost is in digging the hole and dropping them in. Uh, so you're overbuilding it with the expectation that you can lease out. Or for, find other uses for the extra conduit. Also, you're building a twenty to thirty year. Facility that who knows what the future holds in all this. So you're future proofing yourself. Now, on the fiber side of it, you may only need twenty four for your needs. I would never recommend in a backbone to create less than a ninety six count fiber, maybe. A hundred and forty four or in the fiber we put in from Walmart down. To Colorado Springs was a hundred and sixty eight that everybody shared. And actually, the hundred and sixty eight was cheaper than the hundred and forty fours. It just depends on what's available. But in, in a rule of thumb, it's about a penny of fiber per foot. So overbuilding it is not an expense. The real expense is the actual construction. That's probably ninety percent of the cost. I am not dealing at all with the cabinet cost. For example, if you just look at your own city deeds. You can use more fiber and buy cheaper, uh, cabinet equipment. Where it gets real expensive is when you want to put a real high level, high speed data link in. Uh, that handles everything on two fibers. Well, if you got forty eight or ninety six fibers. You can spread that out. You can actually have two fibers go to every individual. Uh, facility separate. Or, or, and then your head end equipment is usually quite a bit cheaper. For example, when you build traffic signals, which I am very familiar with, and you connect them up with fiber. The, the equipment in the cabinet for, uh, fiber connections, thousand bucks, maybe fifteen hundred. Uh, so it all depends on what speed you want. You know, you go to ten gig and it's more expensive than a one gig system. So you got a lot of flexibility, but what you're doing is you're overbuilding a system. So that you have all the flexibility in the world and you can deal with private companies. Uh, to facilitate getting your citizens the best system possible.
Thank you, John. That, that does help me a lot. Let somebody else ask a question before my next one.
Well, so I just want to remind everyone, like, I think HR Green, they were here to know what model are we looking for? I think we have a consensus for three, number three. Cause we're talking about dropping the pipe in and the construction for that. We're not talking about us running the fiber. In that model, in that model, we're talking about people would then want to bring contract, contract. Contracts to us to then run their fiber through.
Or to put their cabinet.
Yeah, so, but do, you needed to know which model we were interested in, right? We have a consensus for three.
Go to that slide real quick.
I have a question about that, though. I personally, I like the idea of the city eliminating the costs that it costs us for our. Uh, providers right now. And it, you, it was about a quarter of a million dollars. I know that might be, this is small in the whole picture where this is at. But what I'm trying to get my head around is these, if we lay the, the fiber in, in this ring. And do we put the cabinets in?
But if we're talking literally about the orange pipe that goes under the dirt and. And dark fibers, they're, they're, no, nothing's attached, nothing's happening. And then a company would come in and say, hey, we have the cabinets, we have the this, we want to, we want to do a proposal. So our.
And then what's our leverage? So then I guess the question is in terms of, of offsetting city costs. What's our leverage, having done just that much?
They get.
Lease agreements?
Yes.
Lease agreements from those providers to lease our fiber and light it up. Am I correct?
Yes.
What I heard you say.
Yes, one of the other things that you could do is if you provide the, the main. Uh, backbone system and allow them in for a real reasonable amount. You would have some say in what they charge your citizens for the service.
Right.
Uh, which very few do that. They just say, well, competition will take care of it. Uh, they're going to maximize their profits. If you're providing the most expensive portion, the backbone. Then you have a lot of say that says, hey, you gotta keep this kind of prices. And oh, by the way, for people who are students, uh, low income kind of things. You'll provide a decent service for ten dollars a month or something like that. You can make those kind of commitments.
Yeah, and, and it's my understanding too, that right now, there is an awful lot of money out there. Federally that we can try to tap into to help us with these construction costs. So the only thing I'm going to add to this is, I think if we can try to make it all underground, that's a much better option than. Uh, overhead and underground. So, and with the funds that are available, that may be able to assist us so that we could accomplish that. So that's what I, that's the model I would be interested in seeing.
So I, I agree with that. My question that I want to get kind of a little clearer on about this cabinet thing is. If we had funds available, that ARPA funds or whatever are available, does it cover that?
Oh, yes.
It can. It can cover that. And if it could cover that, what's their life expectancy? Sevenish years? Then we have to, we have to, we have to manage it. We can't outsource that.
At the city of Littleton, when I replaced network equipment, um, it was five to seven years.
Uh, forget them.
Thank you. Plus, I think that we're interfering in the provider's ability to expand and, and create business. For themselves. So we're interfering in private commerce. The further we go to the right. I think we have the competence to provide the, um, the infrastructure. And then it would be nice to get, you know, competing bids and potential leases. And be able to provide this service to not just the city facilities, but potentially citizens and housing and school. And, you know, that would be great, so.
And that opportunity for all providers to be able to approach us for. Use of our infrastructure.
Yes. So let me just ask these gentlemen, do you have what you need from us then? Or do you have any further questions for us?
You want to go with number three and is the, is the preference underground? Is that the model?
I, I think that would be best for this environment.
Okay.
We want to protect against working.
And we want to get, and, and we want to get some money to help us do all those great things.
Yeah, I, I think that you should go for grants based on an underground system. And realize that you may not get all the money you need and therefore you would look at selected links as being overhead.
Sure.
Which, what you could also do to John's point is, is, is build the fiber ring, underground conduit, hundred percent if you can. And, and I think really, you know, there's so much money out there for resiliency. And, and, and I would argue the, the wildland fire issue is a very serious resiliency issue. So I would think you'd go to the top of that list for all the right reasons, uh, to, to build a fiber ring or to build a, a conduit ring.
Underground.
Underground. And then the only question is, is maybe that's phase one, and then maybe a phase two could be extend the fiber conduit network. In the deeper into the neighborhoods. You could, you could take it if you want, every house in town.
Yeah.
Uh, which, which, and if the federal funds are there, it's almost crazy not to do that.
Right.
If the money's there.
Mayor, I think David Dodd is trying to communicate to us, I think.
Just, just go ahead and shout out David if you are.
Yeah, hey, so, um, I, I, I obviously I know a lot about this because I, I.
Yeah, hey, so um, I, I, I obviously I know a lot about this, cause I, I charted all those uh city uh I guess, uh resources there that we wanted to wire up uh with fiber. But um, but yeah, I'm also with number, from number three, I think is great. And yes, there's the federal money that we could use and there might be a cost, because if we do go underground, it is gonna probably cost more. Um, I believe that undoubtedly it will. Um, but I think it's the right way to go. But I would say that, yeah, there'll be some other costs, but part of this, and I think it's kind of the next step for uh for HR Green as the second uh part of their study, if we were wanting to continue this engineering study, um is talking to those other providers. And some of those providers would be willing to take some of that cost on. So uh the city wouldn't take as much hit on, on overall cost. Uh, if you can come to a good agreement with one of the providers out there that's willing to do that. And I, and I, I believe there are, are folks that are willing to do that. So I don't, I wouldn't want to scare anyone away uh by saying that, hey, if we do this underground, it will cost and just know that there's gonna be more than the federal cost. That's true, but there's still negotiations to be made with private sector and which is what we should absolutely do.
Good point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, uh, great thoughts. I just wanted to add uh some concern uh to going down that path. And um when you have a provider actually build some of the infrastructure, in other words, putting in the fiber conduit in the ground, there's a reluctance from other providers to tap into that network because it's owned by a competitor. So that's a concern.
Okay. All right, counsel, anything further?
Uh, yeah, I do have a more thing too about that in particular. Um, that's true. That's absolutely true. Um, again, negotiations with private sector can solve some of that problem as well. So um you can have, cause when I worked on this, you know, there was a company willing to, to do some of this work and eventually that would turn over to us and then the city would own that for paying for their services kinda thing. So there is, there is other ways to take care of that as well.
So exclusive use for a number of years and then it turns over into an open access network after that exclusive use expires.
The city would own their, the city would own the fiber ring that, that is, that was, you know, the goal of the city as far as connecting the municipality. Um, and then there's other things that we can do as a council. Um, you know, creating a dig once policy where we have put, you know, the pipes are in there. And so uh you wouldn't really turn away competitors because they'd have the ability to go ahead and share that as well. So um it wouldn't be just a single competitor, depending upon how we did it, even if we did negotiate with someone. Um, you know, to, to reduce the cost of our fiber ring, you know, for the city municipality. And also provide uh service to the residents, you know, at a, at a very competitive rate.
So David, you uh, you laid the, the framework for transitioning to the slide that's up now. Um, we just wanted to share with you some potential uh next steps worth considering. And these are not in the scope of the current project, but these are things that you all might wanna think about. Um, so uh certainly creating maps of the existing infrastructure. Um, uh, and then uh doing a market assessment to see what services are currently available in the community. And, and we'll even dive into the costs of those services um and the speeds and that type of thing. Um, and then as, as they just mentioned, a provider outreach, that would be a, a, oh, next step worth considering. And then as Dave mentioned, uh, excuse me, again, great setup, a public policy development. Um, and you see dig wants is even there. Do you know what a dig wants policy is? Okay, great. Um, and then uh to again explore uh the public-private partnerships. And, and we go through what's called an RFEI of request for expressions of interest. So that's what we, we uh would publish. And that would uh gather interest from the different entities, providers, et cetera, that might be willing to partner with you. Um, and then uh again, finalizing the designs, the designs we show you are nowhere near final. You can't build off of them. So um that would be a next step. Uh, and then as Dave was talking about the, the different funding mechanisms available, we would explore those. And then building the network. Um, and we can even assist with that. Uh, we provide can, what's called construction observation services.
Thank you.
Yeah, great discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
There is another thing here too, on the explore established public-private partnerships. So I, I believe if I, if memory serves me well, the next phase, if we were to approve that uh for HR Green, one of the things that, that happens there, when you talk about competition as well, is that uh the city doesn't negotiate with the uh, with the, the private sector and these other companies. HR Green actually does uh a large portion of that for us. So they, if, if, and correct me if I, if I'm wrong, guys, Dave, correct me, you know.
We would partner with the city, be at the table with you, with the potential uh providers. Yes.
Very good.
Right, yep. So um, you know, that would, it kinda takes uh any favoritism out from the city council or the city or anything like that. It, it gives just the, the uh outside, you know, a fair opinion of, of the different providers and who could do what for us for, as a city and give us the best deal.
Since, since we've been talking about Swiss Army knives tonight uh with, with Rob Feld, that's exactly, in fact, that's the analogy we like to use about ourselves. We're Switzerland. You know, we, we, we really work for you. Uh, we, we have no vested interest in, 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 in tugging it this way or nudging it that way. Uh, we're Switzerland. We'll bring you back the best deal, given this great input you've given us tonight. I think we, 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 we now think we, uh, at least I, I, I'm certain, I'm clear on what you're looking for, a resilient underground network uh that's largely federally funded uh that, that involves the private sector uh to a large extent. Uh, and, and is probably virtually, we would use the term ubiquitous, uh and, and encourages private sector competition. Uh, and uh will drive down price and improve service. Did I get all those right? Ken, there's probably a few more in there, but that's, that's the essence of my takeaways tonight.
Yeah.
How's that? Thank you. Good job, counsel. It's a partnership. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thanks, John. Maui Jim, Maui John.
Thanks, John.
Aloha, or however that goes, yes.
We're really sorry you had to spend time in Maui.
That was, it was my fiftieth wedding anniversary present.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Tells you how old I am.
If you guys don't talk too much.
All right. Cool. All right.
It could actually be the end if you stay.
We're, we're moving on. We've got uh no number eight, no number nine, no number ten. Oh, no, I lied, I lied, I lied. I was trying to, trying to get us out of here, you guys. Okay, uh, number ten, we have ten A approval of new special event liquor license and our presenter Suzanne McClair.
Thank you, Mia Labar. As counsel knows, I only bring special event liquor licenses to you if it's a new event. So this is exciting. We have a new event coming to town this weekend. And it's called the two thousand twenty-two Speak Easy Cattle Battle Event. Not sure this, is anyone from the Snaer family here with us this evening? Okay, so they're not here this evening. She explained to me a little bit about what a cattle battle is and sounds like it's something interesting and fun. It'll be taking place this weekend on Saturday from two to nine PM at the U-Pass Saddle Club grounds. They've uh applied for a special events liquor license. They're gonna be serving beer. And um they sent their application in on time, paid the fees, everything's in check. I just need approval from counsel and then if this event occurs with no issues, we'll bring it back to you again. We won't bring it back to you again next year. You won't hear about it from me again. So I just need a motion to approve this special event liquor license.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, counsel, you may vote. Councilmember Connors, did you vote? Need you to vote on your iPad. Okay, thank you very much, counsel. This motion has passed seven zero.
Very good. Now we're off to the races. I just have a couple of uh dates to announce. Uh, Woodland Park Farmers Market is always every Friday, eight AM to one PM in Memorial Park. And Friday night, creative chill. So we have Friday, September ninth uh from six thirty to eight o'clock at the U-Pass Cultural Center in the North Room. And September's theme is summer harvest and pre-registration is required. Have to be twenty-one to participate. You can contact Parks and Rec to register and that, I believe is you do a painting and have a beverage with. So, and then uh we have the nine eleven memorial ceremony on Sunday, September eleventh from uh, from nine AM to ten AM at Lyons Park. That is all I have. Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Councilmember Connors.
I have a couple things, please, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Charles Rook for earning his Eagle Scout Award this past Sunday. It was presented to him by presented to him by his scout troop, two thirty at Memorial Park. So that's pretty awesome. Also, on Tuesday, I was able to attend the welcome ceremony for the Fourth Infantry Division Deputy Commanding Officer, Colonel Monkog. So it was good to meet him. Uh, also, this Saturday is the first Saturday, so there's uh Veterans Breakfast at the Historic Ute Inn. Care of Murph at seven forty-five. Uh, and I have one last thing. Forty years ago, I met Jennifer Lynn Messer on Memorial Day, right there. Uh, had no clue where the Navy would take us. You Jenny Doll have never wavered as my best friend, my greatest supporter, the mother of our children and Mr. Mikey. You were there and you are now the answer to my prayers. I am most grateful to spend many more years with you. My forever love, Jennifer Connors. Forty years ago, Monday. Hey, that couple still looks really hot, trust me.
Um, all I have is I attended for the first time in twenty years, or however long I've been doing it. The um twenty twenty-two Harvest Center and Master Gardener Greenhouse and Garden Tour. I only caught the last day and I only caught two of them. It was awesome. I recommend checking it out next year. If you're at all a green thumb or have fun with greenhouses, cause it was amazing.
Did you go to Charlie Chambers?
I didn't make it to Charlie. I was very bummed. I made it to the plant lady and I made it to the one and divide. Not that I can think of that name.
I didn't make it either, but I just wondered if you were there.
It started raining, so I didn't, and thunder and lightning, so I didn't go out to Charlie's. I will next year, though.
So was it a tour?
Yes, yes, so here's.
Little map. It's a two-day event.
Yeah.
One day in Woodland Park and then one day in the county.
Nice. Okay, good.
Councilmember Neil.
We have.
I'm sorry, were you done?
I am done.
Okay.
Uh, we have not had the DDA meeting. We're working on getting it posted, but uh so everybody is aware this coming Tuesday, seven thirty in the morning AM right here, uh, September fifth. And we will be covering uh progress on uh the Woodland Station Tuesday, Tuesday, the fifth. At seven thirty in the morning. And we'll give an update on the uh Woodland Station. Thank you.
Councilmembers are all.
Well, the uh annual citywide cleanup was held last Saturday. It was absolute amazing. Uh, turnout was a hundred and ten volunteers. Uh, they were, let's see here, um, picked up from Highway twenty-four Fountain Creek, downtown, public parks, schools and neighborhoods. Some of the groups that participated were Boy Scouts Group Two Thirty, the Lions Club, Teller Builders, uh Teller Business Builders, Pike's Peak Towers and Caris Bible College. It was a sunny day and the volunteers collected approximately eighty large garbage bags. And uh in connection with your Creek Week, uh, they had so many volunteers, they deployed uh volunteers at both ends of Creek, uh of Fountain Creek. And they cleaned up the whole thing. So that was awesome. Yeah, very cool. Did you? Yeah. So they're, they liked it, uh, city liked it and there's uh, uh, we wanna have uh it again next year and uh possibly also one in the spring in conjunction with um Main Street and possibly even C-Dot, cause they have, they have a uh um birthday cleanup, C-Dot does, so might do some partnering. That's it.
Councilmember Ot.
I'd just like to say uh to Rob, uh, we'll miss you. Uh, you were like the operations sergeant major for the city. So uh, you know, I know that you did, you did just an amazing job there. And, and I know you will definitely be missed and you will definitely be hard to replace. Um, also, uh Frank, great mustache in that picture. I'll have to, I'll, I'll, I'll try to do that maybe for uh No Shave November.
And Robert.
Many years ago, you could have all that.
Right. And Robert, yeah, like, that's awesome that uh the volunteers for the city cleanup. And, and I think, a big thank you to those volunteers that do that cleanup work. Um, that is, it just, it's really awesome. I know, uh, you know, my wife and I, we walk the city and and we see a lot of little liquor bottles thrown off on the side of the road. And often have, uh, we see how many we can pick up on the way and compare numbers throughout time. Um, so, so it is greatly appreciated when, when people volunteer and do things like that. Um, I don't have a report for the HPC. We haven't had that meeting. We'll have that here in September and that is all I have.
Very good. Just Rob, just really quick. So Councilmember Ot knows, you sound like you're in like a, one of those apps for like dreams, because there's like a cricket noise every time you talk. So it sounds like there's like a cricket chirping and it sounds lovely where you are, but.
Go ahead. Just one other thing about the volunteers, uh, it is worth mentioning that there was something like, was it seventy-five or eighty volunteers from Caris Bible College? And there were so many of them that they decided to do the entire Fountain Creek, so kudos for their participation.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Rob, this is your last council meeting. Congratulations.
Yeah.
And you get to go home early.
It's been a pleasure. Good luck to you.
Yeah. You gonna be around in local Colorado Springs?
Michael.
Only one thing and that's, um, we uh will be closing applications for the Citizens Academy tomorrow. Kinda surprised we only have eight applicants so far. We have ten applicants so far. Would really, would really love to have at least fifteen. I think we have twenty-five seats. Um, it's, it's hard to do the program uh without at least that fifteen. We'd really love to get there. Five people, I shoot, I mean, one, two, right?
So.
Just saying, so.
I just got an email for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And Cindy has asked them to consider attending as well, those that haven't before. So you may get some, some engagement there as well.
All right. Well, we're, this is our last ditch effort. It starts what day?
Tuesday, two weeks.
Two weeks.
September twelfth, maybe. Extend the deadline. No, Monday, sorry, September twelfth.
We'll, we'll keep taking application. The, it technically closes on Friday, but it'll be like open to apply until Monday. Um, we'll, we'll call it next week based on registration, but.
Yeah, we do have the schedule fairly set, but we'll, we'll try and hold, hold that, uh, that application open. And people can apply online. Uh, it can be what's up Woodland Park or just this website.
City website.
City website. Go, go and, go and apply. So, uh, and happy Labor Day.
Very good. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.